Hi Peggy.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Oh, not too bad.
Just waiting for everybody to join in the meeting. Bye.
Just do it. Okay, what's the volume I have made down here?
Can you hear me?
Hi Chapin.
Hi.
Hi Chapin.
I'm using, hi, I'm using a different machine so that I can have my computer for reading these proposals while we're meeting. So I was trying to make sure I'm hooked up okay. So we are, we are three so far, so we don't have a quorum yet. Oh, Megan's there. So that's four and that's a quorum, right?
And Shayla's coming in from the waiting room.
Okay. Good. Hi Peggy.
Here, how you doing?
Good. Welcome. Oh, and there's Shayla, good. So shall I call the meeting to order? It's 7:04. Welcome. I don't have the agenda in front of me because I have all these proposals up on my computer. But is there any public comment? On items not on the agenda? And is there any suggestion of any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We'll go on and I'm not looking at the agenda as the next item to go through these proposals.
We have the September minutes.
Yes.
Can I say something about the minutes?
Yes Shayla.
I want to say I missed the last meeting and I was bummed because I really thought the forum was incredible and I appreciated that a lot. And I really appreciated those minutes because I felt like, almost like I was there. So thank you very much to staff for that. And, and thank you to my fellow commissioners because I agree with the outcome of that. And I really appreciate the thoughtful nature of that decision. So thanks.
Thank you Shayla.
I had one comment, it's more of like a fix in the paragraph that says Chapin Kaner mentioned South Burlington. I think it should just be cleaned up. It says where unlike Williston has had a hard time and then it says unlike Williston where the growth center.
Which has had a hard time maintaining role character south of 89 comma, unlike Williston where the growth center.
That's helpful. So I don't think we, anyone's made a motion yet? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll move to accept the minutes as amended.
Thank you Kate, a second.
I can second it.
Thank you Jill. Discussion. I have one comment, which is that Jason Starr from the Observer called me this afternoon and he had read those minutes, the draft minutes. And so he was up to speed. He was just following up on the action about the CRG proposal and sort of where the planning commission was. I answered his questions, but he had read those minutes and so it really was just confirming what was in them. Which basically is that we decided not to take up that specific proposal, but instead to work on having a growth forum. And doing the other things like working on form-based code and encouraging the conservation commission to look at other ways to preserve more open space in the RZD and so forth. So essentially I didn't tell him anything that wasn't in the minutes, but he wanted, I guess, to hear it from somebody. But I was impressed that he had read them and I thought it was very valuable to have that much information there for people to read. So thank you Emily, I think it was you that wrote the minutes. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of adopting the minutes? Say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. And next on our agenda is?
Oh, sorry Chapin, you can't, you can't see the agenda. It is the discussion of form-based code, I believe. I can't see it either because I have something else on my second screen.
That's what I'm doing too, because I have those proposals up. So there's been some discussion by email just about what we are doing. And I, because some of it clarifies things about the meeting, I did ask if we can have that email thread included in our minutes so that we are going above and beyond in terms of open meeting law. But the upshot of it all is that the, our goal today is to hear Matt's highlights of the proposals for the form-based code. Basically responses to the RFP that the CCRPC put out for form-based code work for us for the growth center. And then for us to give sort of general input about our, what things we value or questions we have, which he will take back to the CCRPC who will be making the selection of the vendor. So we're not going to take any votes, we're just going to sort of give feedback to Matt. And I, Peggy and I see there's, oh, there was someone else, but I see Peggy is on, anyone from the public, basically the rest of this meeting is going to be going through, I think we have nine proposals from vendors and we're going to be looking at them. And again, this is for developing for base, form-based code for the growth center, which we think might then lead us into doing something similar for the RCD, but we wouldn't do it immediately.
Yeah. So Chapin, if I can start us off, I have a quick set of slides to run through just to talk a little bit about some of the highlights of what we might be looking for in these proposals and introduce the topic a little bit. You summarized our point in the process really nicely. I'll add that probably by the end of this week, we'll be following up to interview probably four of these respondents. I hope we could narrow it to three, but I think we have four that we want to interview at least. And there's a little bit of indecision following a meeting I had with the RPC staff today about exactly who the four are. We have, we have a couple that collectively we were pretty sure of. And as we got down, a little further down the list, it got a little harder to make that cut. So I want to share my screen and just run through, not a presentation about each individual proposal, but rather just some of the questions that we're asking and that you might be asking as you look at these. And that might give us a little bit of structure in terms of opening it up to a more free-form conversation afterwards. And I'm also just calling out at the end of this, in case I don't emphasize enough, that if there are things that you would want me to ask those consultants who we follow up with interviews specifically, this is a great time to let me know that or to think about it after this meeting and let me know before the middle of next week, because that's when we'll be speaking with them. So I'm going to share my screen real quick. Should be this one. Okay, hopefully you can see something that says form-based code consultant proposals. Great, okay, so really briefly, we received nine responses. These, these were all linked in your agenda and what I linked to in the agenda are the technical proposals where the respondent says, here's what we're going to do. What I did not link to was the cost proposals. Generally, they all know what our budget is and they're all proposing to spend it. Not a, not a lot of wiggle room there, although there might be a follow-up budget question that I'll talk about in a minute. This is a pretty wide range of firms. Some are more local, some are more distant. Some are more nationally known for their work in the form-based code world and some are emerging. So a good range of responses here. And some of the things that I had sort of in our emails with the planning commission called out that we might ask ourselves when we're looking at these proposals are the, those are the questions I want to go through really quickly here. So one was the understanding of the Williston and Taff Corners Growth Center context. Form-based codes are often applied to expansions of existing beloved downtowns where people really know what kind of buildings they like because they're right there and they just, they just want more of that. Or they're sometimes applied to places where there's no new develop, where there's no development at all and you're creating a whole neighborhood or mixed-use development out of, you know, an empty field somewhere and you have kind of a blank slate. And Willistons, neither of those were evolving and we, we said a lot about that in the request for proposals that we put out. And so part of looking at this is, did the, did the respondent just sort of regurgitate what we said in the RFP back at us? Or did they demonstrate some, some insight into where Williston's going? So there were some of these responses that I think did that better than others. What about online engagement in the era of COVID? Most of these firms that have been doing this for a long time and you see this in some of their responses, lots of pictures of, you know, 50 people standing around a table eating juice and cookies. We know that's probably not how we're going to be able to do our public process. I think all of the firms acknowledged this to some degree, but some better than others in terms of their degree of preparedness or what their outreach strategy is or tool that they plan on using, knowing that they're, they're probably not going to be able to hold a lot of big meetings with lots of people indoors in attendance. And playing off of that, what's the firm's work plan given what's going on with COVID-19? So we do have, I believe at least two of these proposals where the firm is saying, we're not planning on being in Williston at all. Our people will not travel to Williston at all. And the conversation I had with the regional planning staff, we viewed that as a deal breaker. And it's honestly for me, not so much about the ability to run the public process in person or even meet with me or the planning commission in person, although I think that's valuable, but rather to meet with some of the stakeholders. So some of, some of the large owners of land, in particular JL Davis Realty, I've recently experienced trying to have an online meeting with them and it was really challenging. It's clearly something they're not doing a lot of. It's just, it's not something they've had to transition to the way we have. And it's going to be a lot easier to talk to the people who own the land in the growth center if we have somebody who's willing to come and be in person in some form. So that was one of the things that emerged in our own review. And then another one that I put in that bucket of deal breakers is proprietary tools. There is, there is one firm in here, Crea, the purple one with the, with the sort of parchment paper behind the glasses on the cover there. Part of their proposal is essentially that Williston would adopt the use of a coding tool that they manage. And that concerns me. There's some other things about that particular proposal that, that kind of put it near the bottom of my own list, but we can talk about that later. But we, we at the RPC and Williston staff felt that the code should be a document at the end of the day that can be, you know, published and even maybe picked up and physically read and shouldn't be dependent on a software piece that someone else is possibly managing. Another metric that we looked at was involvement within the project team by the principals or partners in these firms. So particularly with some of the bigger names that you see here, Town Planning and Urban Design Collective, VHB and Behan and Code Studio. There's, there's some pretty big names in the form-based code world in some of those proposals. But in some cases, the principal or partner in the firm has allocated about a half an hour or a half a day to the project. And most of the work is happening with junior staff. So that's something to be aware of, you know, if you say, oh, it's so-and-so and then you realize, well, it's so-and-so's firm, but maybe, maybe they're turfing off most of the work to somebody else on the team. Another one was the possibility of involving some kind of a market study in this. We had two firms that identified that they would want to test out their code alternatives against the reality of the real estate development market in Williston. So, you know, by way of example, a code that said, we're going to have lots more regional attraction retail in Williston. You'd probably want to do a market study to try to figure out whether, you know, 300,000 people in the greater Burlington area are capable of supporting a whole lot more retail. Or if you were leaning heavily on office development as part of what you thought would happen in the growth center, I would, I would caution strongly against that, given what we know. And even my own assumption that the future of the growth center is likely to be more residential, there's some utility to actually testing that out and having somebody look at the numbers. And I wanted to go back to the comment I made about not worrying about the budget too much at this level. With the one caveat that if we do have a firm that's in our radar and that has a little bit of room in the budget, we might add this market study element to their proposal through the CCRPC's work plan and, and try to be able to do that with whatever code we're bringing to the select board to be able to say, yeah, we've, we've looked at whether this, you know, would actually result in this development pattern, given the, the market forces that are out there. And another one to look at in these is timeline. You have everything from a sprint at seven months to, you know, somebody who wants to basically use the full timeline of the project at 22 months. And those, you know, I think those two extremes say something about how we might experience it at a, at a workload level. And, you know, there's part of me that says, oh gosh, I'd really love to be seven months out from now and just have this whole project done, wouldn't that be great? But you also want to think about how the community and your citizen participation might experience a rapid timeline for such a fundamental project as, you know, setting the course for Williston's Growth Center. And on the flip side is 22 months, starting to feel like it's just dragging on or is that, is that realistic? So there's some, there's some pretty big diversity in the proposals about timeline. And so the last part would, earlier is, you know, we do have an opportunity to go back into interviews with at least three, if not four of these respondents and ask some follow-up questions. And I'm really interested to hear from the planning commission members, what kinds of follow-up questions you'd like us to ask? That's my whole presentation. I'll stop screen sharing and we can go from there. I have links up for all the various vendors, if we need to bring one up to take a look at it. And if I can just get out of this and/or Emily, if you want to take the screen share away from me, that's fine too, because I'm, I'm losing my, my button. There it is. Buried under several windows, perfect. That's, that's the, that's the really, the really quick tour. And then as you folks have questions, I can try to fill in, you know, what I've seen and what I might want to highlight from some of the different vendors.
Does anyone else want to go first?
So I guess my question is Chapin, do we want to go like vendor by vendor or? What's your vision? I, I was very relieved to know we didn't have to vote on. I've done government scoring of contracts before and I got incredibly worried, that's what we were up to and I'm happy to hear that, I was happy to hear that that was not it. So I just have fun of like very basic notes on each one, but I don't know if that's, what's the best way to go about it?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
The, the ones that are deal breakers, in the, in the interest of expediency, I think it's probably not a good idea to spend a lot of time on them.
Yep.
If, if, if the CCRPC and, and your staff have already said, like, no way because of X, like, I don't feel like, like, they might have interesting ideas for us to come back to, you know, and maybe we want to, maybe one of them proposed like something unusual that nobody else did and we would want to add some future moment. But as far as tonight goes, it seems like that would be, you know, kind of a push toward efficiency to, to focus on the ones that are, you know, most viable and then we can target our feedback.
Sure. So I, I think I can, I can be candid here. The, the, the ones that we saw as, as having a deal breaker component were STS Consultant, Crea and Code Studio. And so Crea had the proprietary tool, Code Studio, nationally renowned firm, Lee Einzweiler. I've, I've talked to him about form-based codes before, but they're proposing no travel to Williston. And STS is just really, really light on the architecture side and really heavy on the legal side. And just didn't feel like a very compelling RFP response in general. So that leaves me with six. If it, if it helps, I can tell you the two that we thought we wanted to interview. And then there are four that we're trying to sort of hash out of the middle at this point. But I don't want to, I don't want, I don't want to trigger a bunch of group think, I really want to hear what, what folks think as well.
That, that's helpful, thank you Megan for bringing that up and happily that lines up with what I thought, so it makes me feel a little better too. I did have a question about VHB.
Yeah.
I just wasn't sure, it, the proposals that were similar that they gave us, many of them were in Vermont, which seemed like a positive. And on the flip side of that, and maybe I'm being unreasonable, they didn't seem like they had a lot of similar size and maybe I had that wrong. But it looked like, you know, not that Williston is a huge metropolis, but it just didn't look like they had, and maybe that's just because they were focusing on their Vermont projects. But I just, that was one thought I had about them that I was a little worried about. It was so nice that they had a bunch of Vermont projects and also the size issue was a concern. And that was the only other one that I had a concern with their other projects and what they had shown as past work.
So when you say size Shayla, did it look like the projects VHB had done were all in bigger places or smaller, smaller places? Okay, yeah, I, I think that is probably true of them compared to a couple of the other firms that have worked in, you know, more urbanized areas. You know, that, that said, you know, they've, they've had contact with stuff in Burlington and South Burlington that's, you know, fairly big. I think that also came up when we talked about, you know, their, their, their coding expertise is coming from PlaySense from Brandy Saxton. And you'll see that she, you know, has a ton of Vermont experience, but a lot of it is in, you know, smaller places.
Historic design review.
Yeah, more, more of the places that have that village or downtown, although I forget if it was, I think, did she work on the one for the new town center stuff in Georgia? I know VHB did, I don't, I don't remember if she was on that as well. But that was, that was definitely an observation related to them. You know, one of the pluses that I see for VHB is just that, you know, David, David Saladino, one of the principals on the project is also on the DRB in Williston. And has some pretty good firsthand knowledge of some of the gaps we've been experiencing in our current development standards. And their proposal specifically talks about debriefing or assessing some of the recent site plan approvals in the growth center and trying to sort of diagnose what would, what would be helpful. So that's, that's as much as I think I know that I could respond to your, your comment on VHB.
That's helpful. David's good too.
I did have one thing I just wanted to slip in before, the one, and it could be that I missed it in the other proposals, but TPUDC talked about engaging underrepresented groups specifically. And so in terms of questions Matt to bring back for the other proposals, I really want to make sure we have that question in there. In terms of public engagement, how are you going to engage underrepresented or otherwise marginalized groups that have not been party to this type of conversation in the past, particularly in COVID? What does that look like? How do you do that? I like that they, that they brought it up. I don't know that their solution was perfect, I'm not expert in that, but I was glad to see that they actually said that in their proposal. I'll keep talking, but I don't want to dominate, cut me off. So Coda Metrics was interesting because they had this very specific online engagement tool that they were using. And when I went and looked at it, it actually, it did look like it was easy to use and that people had. easy to use and that people had thought it was helpful in the past. And I liked that they had a very specific sort of possible solution. One of the things I was a little worried about and some of the others was when they said, oh, we're going to work with you to develop an online engagement plan. And on the one hand, it's really helpful to have them work with the town and think about local specific needs. And on the other hand, I worry that you want them to also be coming to us with possible solutions. So I did like that that was a possible solution. And that was a concern I had with VHB was that they were like, we'll help you navigate COVID and public engagement. And I was like, no, like, we want you to actually, you know, be more in, engaged. Sorry to duplicate the word, be more involved in how to do that well and make it really act actually meaningful. And I thought that Coda Metrics was one of the ones that explained that the best. Yeah, that was my other big comment, I think.
Yeah. Thinking about the engagement, Matt, thinking about some of the conferences that we've been to where they have that as a topic, reaching out to local stakeholder groups. So if your community has a large immigrant population, getting involved with the people that they interact with the, with the most and the people that they trust. Because just posters or just interacting with planning staff that they've never talked to might not be compelling enough. So churches, childcare, places where they frequent, find those community leaders and educate them and bring them on board to help explain the project with whatever type of community it is that you're working with. Especially people where there is a language barrier. I think that's what Megan Tuttle's big takeaway was when she spoke at one of the conferences. She's one of the planners in Burlington. And I think Winuski has a similar thing. It's like, find those gathering places and those community leaders and then help bring them on board. And then they can help spread the word in their communities.
Yeah, I think most of these folks, I think some of them are more realistic about what they're going to ask from the staff than others. So I try not to ding the ones who are, are being comprehensive about just how much they're going to want us to do. I talked a little bit with Regina and Taylor at the RPC about that today. And they said, you know, you're probably going to have to tell them who to reach out to and where to go to do that. You can't rely on them to find those places, but they should have a strategy for what they're going to do once you give them that contact list. You know, it's the same thing with, same thing with the owner stakeholders. You know, they, 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 they want to sit down with you and find out who those people are and, and have you kind of arrange some of the first contacts sometimes. So, but I do think, I do think it's important to look at, you know, anything someone's saying beyond, oh, well, we're going to advertise the meeting. You know, we'll put it in the back of the newspaper kind of thing. I think most of them are, are saying that.
Shayla, you've done a lot of research. Do you want to keep going?
I'm happy to keep going. That's okay. No, but again, please. So the FERL group seemed like, Matt, it's interesting you talked about this, the leads on the project. And again, maybe I have this wrong. It looked like they would actually be on the project, which I liked. And I liked their COVID public engagement strategy and they had Vermont experience. So I thought they were kind of, they were an interesting proposal, the principal proposal. I like that they had New England projects. But it was very unclear to me if they really understood Williston or, or our particular request. So, and again, I could have read that wrong, but that one was more of a me, I had that one in net like a maybe category. Because it wasn't clear to me that they got Williston. And one more thing about Coda Metrics that I liked was that they, they talked about sustainability and they, they just had some, some good, it felt like they had stronger content around green, you know, building green environments and sustainable environments and community based environment. So that I did like that as one to explore. They did not, but they were one that did not specifically talk about underrepresented groups. And like Emily, I really like your point that you can't, you have to find the leaders in those communities in order to, to actually get meaningful participation. So that's a really good, a really good point. And I think one we should hold on to. The BHAN one, their public outreach felt a little just semi-formed. And Matt, maybe that's sort of what you're referring to, like how much would they lean on you? And so it didn't feel as robust as Coda Metrics, FERL and the TPUDC plans to me. But it did look like they have worked on similar sized projects or similar types of projects.
Didn't they work on Burlington?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of people worked on Burlington. So SKS and, and their attorney worked on Burlington. BHAN did, TPUDC did a bunch of preliminary work in Burlington. And one of the cautionary things about Burlington that Regina brought up when I was talking to her today is just remember it's Burlington. You know, so we've, we've sort of set SKS aside, but they had about five attorneys on the team. And that's what you need if you're going to talk about zoning in Burlington. But it's probably not what you need to talk about zoning in Williston. You need, you need, you know, architects and planners. So but yes, there was, there was some local experience there as well.
I'm just noticing the chat and Megan said, is there a conflict of interest concern? I assume that's in response to David Saladino, a DRB member being on one of the teams.
Yeah, that was, that was, you're right.
So, you know, whenever, whenever you have somebody who's connected to the town, who might also be a vendor, there, there's certainly a concern, but the main concern. I've known since before we put the RFP out that VHB and David were interested in responding to it. And so I've just made sure that we didn't give him any preview or any privileged information about, you know, our development of that process or give him a head start on anything. So I think we're okay and it's, and it's okay for a vendor like that to be applying despite that connection. At the end of the day, the contract is with the RPC. So, you know, we, we have to be aware of whatever their rules are too. But it is something to keep an eye on.
You're mentioning BHAN and Burlington. They also did Benning, a bunch of stuff in Bennington and Plattsburgh. And I wondered if we have any reference information from those and also Clifton Park, although when they give reference projects and the reference projects are by one of the subcontractors that they're engaging with, it's different. So I, what I did notice that BHAN Planning and Design had 396, about half of their hours were by the principals from BHAN. And that they were planning to be on site. They're using a firm called Regrowth Planning for a lot of the detail work and the GIS group for some of it. It seemed like everybody is piecing together multiple skills. And some of them were more specific about who would do what. And I can imagine if I were writing this kind of proposal and there were nine competitors each time, it's really hard to put down specific people and then know that those people will be available when that potential client wants to move ahead. And so I was actually surprised at how specific some of them are.
I thought about some of them seem like they subcontract a lot of the work. It's like this firm does this, this, and so like I felt that way about the FERL one. It's like, the only person who's really Vermont based is like the one guy who's done only Vermont things. And, you know, it's like Huntington, which isn't really comparable to Williston. And I felt like this, then the cities and towns that they were referencing, like Cedar Rapids, Iowa is nothing like Williston. But then they spent a lot of time saying how that's like one of their big successes. So that was challenging for me to see from a planning staff, you know, what would that feel like working with those different communication patterns or those different workflows? I think that can get really complex. And that's, I kind of felt that with, with a couple of the proposals.
So at this point, why don't we go down the list? And if anyone has a specific comment on them, BHAN was first on the list as we, they were given to us. Are there, and I just note that they were saying they would come on site and their plan went out 19 months, which is sort of average. And and do we have any more information about them? Do people have reactions to their proposal?
Just that their public outreach felt a little mushy to me. Not bad, just sort of not quite as concrete as some of the other ones.
Coda Metrics, which uses Evolve VA and Duncan Associates and Conveo for online tools. Their, their timeline was 12 months. Their closest example they gave is in Hartford, Connecticut. I was impressed by their public outreach and communication plan.
I agree, Chippen. I, I like that about them. And it did look like they had some similar sized projects. Again, size being size of community. But it didn't, I didn't get the sense that they were like, oh yeah, Williston, I know that place.
If my mic needs to be turned off, let me know that the F-35s are going over. They're started their night training right now.
Next question. I guess Matt and Emily a question. So I'll just start by saying I was unable to look at any of the proposals. So I'm only coming with questions. But I guess, you know, I really appreciate Shayla's comments. And it, it sounds like the, that they had different, very different styles in the outreach plan. And I just want to know from the planning staff, like, how big a deal is that? Is that something that we would expect to turn over largely to, you know, a consultant? Or do we already have our process? And so they just kind of are a little bit of frosting on the cake? Or like, from your perspective, how important is that?
So from my perspective, it's very important that we do have robust public engagement that draws people out who maybe haven't engaged yet. I don't think there's been a really well coordinated conversation about the future of Taft Corners in Williston in a very long time. What we have in the town plan is well intentioned, but it's a recapitulation of, of things that have been said, I think, since the 1990s and, and needs some refinement. So we fully expect that we'll, as a staff, be putting a lot of effort into the outreach. And honestly, a lot of the outreach work we've been doing in the last couple of years is in part to try to build that infrastructure. So we can make that available to whomever we're working with and say, okay, we've got a mailing list. We've got a newsletter. We've got a participant list from our, our survey on development and we're, we're going to, you know, make use of all of that. But I believe that the more help we can get from that outside help to run that process, because it takes an incredible amount of time to do that stuff. And we've got to, you know, we've got to run a day to day planning office while this is all going on. So it is important to me, it's, it's most important to me, you know, I know from the consultant side that when they are assembling these RFP responses, they're, they're pulling parts and pieces off the shelf of other RFP responses they've done in the past. And public outreach and engagement, because of everything that has happened in the last six months, has just totally changed. So I'm really looking at it to say, did you pull everything off the shelf about juice and cookies and 100 people in the room? And then write a paragraph at the end that said, oh, by the way, we know that COVID is a thing and it might be an issue. You know, across this timeline, which is like, if you're writing this RFP response in August and you're saying it might be an issue, you're, you're understating. It's, you know, it's, it's really going to be an issue. And so I, I appreciate, there's a, there's a couple of respondents in here, and I have notes somewhere on who they are, that talked about publishing some short videos. There's, there's a little bit of just Form Based Code 101, just getting, getting that idea out there. What are we, what are we trying to, to do here? How is this different from what we're doing now? Those are definitely highlights to me. So as opposed to looking at what kind of a code is going to get developed out of this? I think if you look at most of the responses we're talking about, the, the pictures of their illustrated codes are pretty similar. You know, you get these oblique site plan drawings with dimensions on them that, you know, talk about important building elements and placement on sites and, and all of that. I think we're going to get that from anybody, but I see more distinction in the public outreach between the responses.
Shayla, you're muted.
I apologize. The jets are gone. Of the two that we've looked at, Matt, we just talked about the first two. And a couple of us commented that the outreach planning from Coda Metrics looked pretty good and not quite so strong from BHAN. Is that your interpretation as well? You're mad at? You're all muted too, Matt.
Yeah, that would, that would be my impression as well, Chippen, that Coda Metrics was stronger. They do talk about using that Conveo platform. We're using that in a small degree right now with the Interstate 89 2050 study. But we're not using it a whole lot. So it, it seems to work for what it is. You know, you can do some interactive map input type stuff. You can, you can, you know, use it to input comments and things like that. I guess that's the other thing. When I talk about, you know, public engagement that's mapping input, a lot of form based codes also start from a place where they're really trying to decide where the new streets ought to go. Williston has a lot of that figured out and is going to have even more of it figured out because of the work of the Mobility Group and the Official Map Project. So when you're thinking about engagement and also just looking at the overall work plans of these, there's a couple that are a little more transportation heavy than they probably need to be. So just another, another little thing to kind of keep in, keep in mind.
So just on those two still, what's hard for me to say what I value is that BHAN has some, we can find people who worked with them in Burlington, Bennington and Plattsburgh. Whereas Coda Metrics, I didn't see nearby examples. Did I miss that or?
No, there's nothing in New England. The closest they get to is New York. And it's like, okay.
And Hartford, Connecticut. Yeah. So to me, that's a, a negative that they don't have local experience, that we can sort of check the references with people who understand where we are.
I agree with that, Chippen. That, that really stuck out to me in that proposal.
Okay. And, and for me, it doesn't mean that BHAN goes to the top of the list. It just means I'd want to, especially it looks like they did a lot for Plattsburgh, a significant amount for Plattsburgh, more than they did for Burlington. And I would be interested to know how Plattsburgh feels about it.
I mean, I've been to Plattsburgh and I don't feel that great about it.
There may not be much that's been built under that code yet.
You're a little ahead of the 30-year timeline.
Be like judging Williston on our code in 2021. Might not know yet.
So we should skip pretty quickly past the next two because they were on your disqualification sort of list. But I would just comment that Code Studio, that their home office is in Texas and there was nothing local. The only thing comparable at all to me in their examples was Asheville, North Carolina. So I'm okay with the fact that they, partly because they don't want to do anything onsite, I think.
Yeah.
And then CRIA, which also seems to be RCI, which is Recode Institute.
Right.
It seems to be the same people, they have two different organizations and then their application is a little bit, sometimes talks about one instead of the other. But I felt like it was really loose and didn't have some specifics. And it didn't have a schedule or a number of hours. And I think you were saying to disqualify it because they use their own tool called Recode. It's some kind of a formula. The, from reading it, I thought the tool was basically a system for gaining input and making decisions about what your form-based code should be, which I thought might be a real, speed the process along. However, all their sample projects were in Washington State. So I'm okay that. Yeah, I was also, I think the entire firm is women, which I kind of liked that they are definitely diverse. But I think we need to move on past them because of the proprietary tool and because they don't have any local, there's no local. I guess what I'm saying is I do value the local connections because it shows whether that vendor has been able to understand where Vermont community is. And if they understand where Vermont community is and are doing a good job for other Vermont communities, that gives me confidence that it will work for us.
Yeah, I think, Chapin, the other thing we sort of saw in their proposal that was a bit of a negative is they're very geared toward serving those small towns in Washington State where there's not a lot of staff horsepower to do administration. And that is certainly, you know, a niche that needs to be filled. But I don't think it's necessarily where we're at in Williston.
Okay. So going down, continuing down the list, unless anyone wants to say anything about those two that we're skipping over. Okay, Farrell, I think next is Farrell Madden. Looks like they're out of DC, that they do plan to work onsite. They're one of the shorter ones at 15 months. They use a bunch of things too, like Philango Design Studio, Common Ground Urban Advantage or something. TND, something Partners for Economic Solutions. But they also have a lot of local experience, including they did the Winuski Form-Based Code. And they've worked with South Burlington, Johnson and Newport. So you may already know what South Burlington thinks of their work or Winuski thinks of their work, Matt, do you?
I do. And actually Regina Mahoney at the Regional Planning Commission was involved in, in both of those. So I think in both cases, when we talked about Farrell, she had really good things to say about Farrell. A few questions about some of the subcontractors they're partnered with and a couple of follow-ups that were just kind of related to how she experienced the arc of the South Burlington and Williston projects that she would want answered a certain way if, if we were to move forward with them. So they were in, in sort of a red, yellow, green regime. They were in our yellow zone pending, you know, some things we'd want to ask in an interview.
Jill, what did you, you said something about them earlier, Jill. Can you repeat it?
Yeah, they were the one that had a lot of the subcontracting kind of from all over, but they did have the one gentleman who's from Newport, who did the Winuski project, did the South Burlington. So it seemed like they at least have somebody anchored. And he seems to be the one who would do the form-based code and the architecture, which I think are some of the most like visible pieces of this project. So at, or at least in the outcome of it.
Okay. Any other comments about Farrell Madden? Next is Principal Group, which I think is out of Boston. And they use Dan Bartman Place, Place Code and Ivy, Ivy Van. They talk about an online process, but did they also say they're going to go onsite? Matt, I may have missed it. Did I lose you? Oh, you're muted, Matt.
Sorry, I had the jets coming over, so I was
Me too.
Not subject everybody to that. So I'm looking at the principal.
I almost just asked where you all live and then remembered you all live in Williston. That's why we're all hearing the jets.
I'm in Sepulvede, so I'm, I get them first.
People over the state. I'm like, I'm sorry, I gotta.
So what, what Principal Group says is they are prepared to conduct a public participation process that's entirely online and virtual. So we, we, we know that our public process may have to be that, you know, if not distanced, it, it could even go to the point of needing to be virtual. I feel like there is a part where they're on the ground. At least with the project, you know, team with, with ourselves and the RPC, but I'll, I'm, I'm going to make a note to double check that and that if, if we were to talk to them, we would.
I just did Ctrl F for travel, site, onsite visit onsite. And so we're in visit, unless it's not a readable page.
Yeah, I'll have to look. I will say the, the RPC staff thought this was a pretty compelling proposal from the notes I took this morning. But it may not have been related to the process piece. It may have been something else.
I like that this group, particularly in the time of COVID, had videos, like educational videos as a part of their process. What was the other thing I liked? Even just their proposal itself was a lot more visual with just showing different architectural features. So it showed, you know, to me that shows capacity and already like emphasis of what, you know, they even did a lot of charting. So I think there's a lot about that that's super user friendly for when they're doing stakeholder engagement or community engagement that already sort of came out to me just with how they presented their proposal, which was different than some of the other ones. So it stood out to me in just a format kind of way.
Yeah. These folks, if you get way down in like page 24 of this, where they're going through examples, they did this work in Newcastle, Maine, which is a pretty small village and it's more, more rural than the Growth Center by, by a lot. But I actually went to a presentation by one of the select board members from Newcastle a couple of years ago. And what I liked about this firm is working in this rural context illustrated their flexibility and willingness to draft their code. So they actually had some elements of the code they did for Newcastle, that there's just no way they pulled them off the shelf from anywhere else. They had a form-based code for an expanded farmstead with an accessory dwelling. They had a form-based code for a tree-lined dirt road. They did, they did some neat stuff. And so there's a visualization on page 25 where they've taken, you know, like a, like a drone shot of this village and, and drawn in the new development and streetscape. And I, I liked that approach as far as really good visualization goes. And I think that's the, the thing to think about a little bit as we plan for public engagement and input is like, you know, what are, what are, what have you already heard about the Growth Center from people about what they, what they like and mostly what they don't like? You know, we hear people say block buildings over and over again. I don't like those blocky buildings. There's, there's a lot that can be done with a tool like this to, to try to tease that out.
Okay. And I would also mention that they had seemed to have a detailed understanding of our request for proposal. And they had very specific plan. They appeared to be a strong team that was well organized from just reading the application. Other comments on the Principal Group? There's just three to go and one of them is on the not qualifying probably. And that's the next one, which is STS Consulting, which had the 24 month, which is the longest span. And I think I agree with it was cobbled together from my perspective.
Yeah, I didn't like that. I mean, I, it just felt like it was led by this lawyer group. And I understand we need an aspect of that, but that doesn't, for some reason, I'm much more focused on. It didn't feel like they focused on public engagement and the design and how to develop.
I was surprised how many hours they gave to Joe McNeil, which meant that he would be a lot of the front of the project, you know, a lot out in the public for the project. Anything else about STS or can we go on? Okay. Next to last is the Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative. I think they're out of Tennessee. And they use a couple of other things, but what was interesting to me is they were on the short side of 12 months. But they do have, they did use comparable projects, but I wasn't sure if they were all from the main group or from the subcontractors for Middlebury, Colchester, Burlington, St Albans, South Burlington and also Lewiston, Maine.
So their, their roles in each of those projects have been a little bit different from one another. So they, they're, they did recent work in Middlebury related to the downtown's response to the railroad project. You know, essentially shutting down downtown Middlebury for two years. They did work in Burlington that was mostly around the public engagement side, but I think not the coding in the end. That's, that's when Joe McNeil kind of came back into the picture in Burlington. Have to double check what happened in Colchester. I do know that they also did the Sawmill Jericho Market Triangle area up in Jericho. That was an early project of theirs from quite a, quite a few years back. In, in non-COVID times, I would view TPUDC as sort of the public engagement superstars. They have this whole Planapalooza process that is a kind of a fun way of doing the, the whole charrette intensive thing. I was a little concerned that their, their sort of statement about how they would pivot to dealing with this in the time of COVID felt a little thin to me. And that was, that was the, the biggest concern I had about them. And also that Brian Wright, their principal, is down for very few hours within, within this project.
I felt the same way, Matt, about the COVID piece. Like they didn't seem to say a lot about that. But I also just love that they did say that their approach, I mean, they, they literally use the word subtlety and humor intellect entertainment. I think that to me made me think that in an interview, they might really sell like you and the CCRP in a way that they're not coming across in this. But I also think if we were to sort of really ask them the details and nuance about what will you do in time of COVID when you can't, maybe your humor plays differently virtually. You're, you know, these types of things, how does that come across?
Yeah. I, I think that, that approach could be a really good fit, given, you know, some of the conflict we've experienced about Williston. And I think you're, you're, you're zoomed right in on what I would ask, which is, so how, how are you going to do that if you can't, you know, put everybody in the room with juice and cookies?
Yeah, because, you know, icebreakers, those things work really differently when you're with skin and bodies and chairs versus like, you're just on a flat screen and people are, you know, kids behind them. It's a really different thing to, to deal with controversy when you don't really have that physicality to it.
Yeah, somehow I missed the number of hours for each person on it. And a lot of, a lot of the reference projects are under each individual person that's involved through the subcontractors.
And I just want to reemphasize that they were the only ones who really called out underrepresented groups. And it does not need to like, so that made me like them, but I just think we need to. Anybody else, do you think that that is something we need to really emphasize?
Yeah. And I thought they had really good examples. Are they, and did they use PlaySense in Urban Studio or something, or Union Studio? Any other comments on TPUDC? And so the last one is, I have it down as, oh, VHB. Who said they would go onsite. Their timeline was about 16 months. And I didn't write down more about them. I don't know why.
So they're the ones, Chapin, using PlaySense and Union Studio.
Okay. Oh, and so they're the ones that maybe that had really good examples then too.
Yeah. I'll try to bring that up while we're.
I'm going to double check.
They haven't done projects as large as Williston.
Like this, this is the one with the guy from the DRB, the David Saladino, who's the managing director. Interesting. Okay.
Okay. And to, to me, David is an asset because I know him and his personality is really calm and good. I've, I've volunteered in school with him in his child's classroom. And I've seen him on the DRB, but.
Yeah, I think one of the things to know about VHB is just that they're very big and they usually have a lot of stuff going on. So there's a little bit of concern about their, you know, sort of potential ability to, to focus. I think some of that's mitigated by having PlaySense involved because Brandy's a, a one-woman show and you know, would, would probably be really focused on Williston when she was working here. But VHB's got, got a lot of stuff going on. They are also probably of the firms that responded. The one that has the biggest transportation planning background. Not that they're necessarily over emphasizing that in this response, but it's just, it's a lot of what they do. So take that for what it is. You might, you might see that as, you know, good, good, bad or indifferent. And, and you can see that they did do work for South Burlington City Center. So you've got a, a nearby example with them there.
And have you talked to anybody from South Burlington, Matt, about how, had they liked them?
Not in particular about how they like VHB. I've talked more about how they like the performance of their code. And I think there's a, there's a general feeling that they're getting good results. There's always bumps in the road when you start trying to administer one of these things because it's, it's very prescriptive. And there's a lot of careful measuring of plans against the, the standards of the code that has to go on. A lot of what I've heard about South Burlington's code is actually from the developer side. And they find it challenging because so many of the standards are, you know, you, you either pass or you don't. And there's very little negotiation available. And they find it challenging because so many of the standards are, you know, you, you either pass or you don't. And there's very little negotiation available. That's, that's where form-based code is going to take you though. And you know, you, you want to make sure you get your code right so that you're, you're asking for the right things. The other side of that is it does let you be very authoritative about what you want. And you know, there are some examples in Williston where I think the way our backlog gives us flexibility has resulted in, in some bare minimum compliance on a couple of buildings and a couple of sites. That's been very hard for the DRB to feel like they could really ask for anything more than that.
With this, I definitely, it was the most like Williston familiar and that's obviously because of who submitted it, but it's like from the photos of our community to, you know, the, the nuance of understanding that public involvement could involve something like from Porsche Forum, which is often a way that we even communicate with our own outreach. I think that's a huge benefit of, of just starting with someone who already doesn't need to be taught the landscape or like the language and like, you know, kind of how, how we go about things. I think that's an asset.
And Shayla, was it you that said that this one had small projects? Did I mix things up?
No, you, you didn't. But again, like I, I read them all last night. So could be, but it just felt like, I mean, one thing that I am thinking about is I want this to work, you know, for a larger population in, in the future. And so, and I, maybe I'm wrong, but it kind of in my head, I'm thinking, okay, so I, I want this, whoever's going to be working on it to have experience with a place that is bigger than Wilson now, because that's where in theory we have to be planning for. But they do show a lot of Vermont projects, which Chapin, I agree with you and we know that that's really helpful in many ways. It's, so it's a tricky balance, but I did, I just, I do want to make sure that they are not thinking about South Royalton, Vermont. You know, that that is a Newport, you know, or like.
Yeah, or Georgia, Vermont, which is one of their examples.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
And they might not be. And I, but it just was a thing that I was thinking about when I, when I read it. And it, and they did also, they, they were the ones who said the thing about how they would help us navigate the public engagement. Which again, maybe I'm just getting hung up on those words, but I was like, no, 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 you're going to do the public engagement. So I think, yeah, just being clear about where those boundaries are and what that looks like. Cause I didn't feel like they were as clear to me in how they would do that, how they would be the ones leading it, what that would look like as compared to somebody else.
Matt, do you know, does that firm, does VHB do bigger projects and do they just select the examples based on the fact that we are a Vermont town and they chose Vermont projects?
I'll have to take a look. I'm, I'm not familiar with a land use coding project, although some of the illustrations, not, not the example projects they cite, but the illustrations they have of codes they've worked on do appear to me to be from bigger places. Just, just because I'm seeing some code examples with five and six story buildings and, and, you know, greater density of developed blocks than, than I think we have. So I would say they probably, they probably have.
Yeah, like on page 21.
Yes, but it would be, it would be a good follow-up question to say, you know, are you, are you looking at where Williston is, is headed? And are, do you know, do you have parallel experiences with, with places that are, that are that size?
Yeah. And the key personnel, I had seen David Saladino under transportation planning. I didn't realize he's also up at the top as a principal in charge.
Yes.
So they're basically saying he's the lead on this project. Okay. Which, which to me is, is not a bad thing, but I hadn't realized that I thought he was doing more one piece of it and then realized they have him up at that level. Okay. Any other comments? So Matt, in terms of your questions, did we address those as we went?
I think you did. I wanted to just go back to that. I don't need to display it, but I think, I think you've hit a lot of the highlights and, and points of difference between the proposals with this conversation. I did, I did load this presentation with the questions on it and I also had a slide that I left out. That's just what are the, you know, we have a, we have a spreadsheet going with just, you know, an attempt to do some numerical rating of these between myself and the RPC staff. And you know, what, what we're looking at there, we're looking at public engagement experience. We're looking at graphical design experience, overall quality of the application, quality of response to Williston's stated scope of work. So does it, does it feel like they read and understand what we said we needed? And then there is, there is a significant element for disadvantaged or women owned business. So there's, there's a, there's a point multiplier for that. And so we have that with a couple of these firms, either the principal firm or contract or commitment to contract elevates a few of them that way. So, you know, I, I think with the, with the three that we set aside today, any of the remaining six could, could do this project and, and could do it well. It's an embarrassment of riches in a, in a large degree. That doesn't mean we shouldn't, you know, be careful and ask some hard questions as we, as we drill down toward making a decision.
So I had added to your, your list was, you know, about the engagement strategy and do they get it about our growth center? And do they show example projects that are, have parallels? And I had added to that other references strong and they'd be especially strong if they're for local projects like South Burlington and Winuski, who've been going through some of this. And so I, I feel as though those with local references, we should check the references. And, and I almost feel like I, I hope you could do that, Matt, so that it's our, it's our Williston opinion of the reference, not the CCRPCs. They may have a very good balance to what you think, but I'm interested in planning director to planning director.
Yep.
Feedback. And as we went through them, I put marks of sort of pluses and minuses sort of away from the center of the group. And I had pluses on Feral Madden, Principal Group, Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative and VHB. I don't know if that matches what other people had at all. In a sense, it's the last four, except for, you know, if you exclude STS, it's the last four.
Yeah, Jacob, and those are my top four with principal and Feral being one too.
It would be useful.
I had, I had codometrics as a maybe with the, with the caveat that of the local project issue.
Yeah, anybody who wants to raise a, you know, a number one or a top three, I'm keeping track of all of that as we go. And, and that's certainly all really helpful to me. If there's a, if there's a standout for anybody, this is a great time to let me know that.
Number three for me was the TPUDC.
Okay.
Mostly because I think I would like to hear them interview, the way they write like the Planapalooza, like I think they'd be really, I think they might sell me, right? Like I think they have which I think can come out more when you pitch.
Yep.
And I had a, a minus on codometrics, just because their closest example they gave us was Hartford. I just didn't feel they checked that box. Otherwise I liked them.
Yeah. And the only, the only other comment, I guess, is just the VHB. I just really would want them to tell you more about their public engagement and how they would do that. Well. So for like, if I'm taking into account my opinions and the groups, the, the Feral principal and TPUDC look like the top three in my notes. Again, with my, with my run.
And, and I wouldn't, I just had pluses on those four. And to me, it's, I would be driven a lot by the follow-up questions to people that they've worked for, to other planning directors that they've worked for in this area. If we hire a firm for this and we like it, we might, they would have a leg up if we then decide to do form-based code for the RZD, right?
Sure.
I did run these by the hack and a couple of the members did seem to read through them. And our conversation very much mirrored this conversation with someone that's familiar with Vermont and New England, thinking about not only as a form-based code, but a form and character code. That's what Behan used in their letter. So similarly like your focus is very much what the hack is also looking for and, and concerned about how that public input process is going to take place in COVID era.
I like how Behan labeled their photo as the former friendlies. They, they may have jumped the gun a little bit on that. I, I, they may be right. I'm not sure yet.
Well, and I was confused by the codometrics cover. Is, is that just an old picture, the three tomatoes? Is that supposed to be our center of?
It looks quite a bit like Maple Tree Place.
Yeah, I feel like that looks like the restaurant that's next to the movie theater, but then I was like, or is it just a ripped image from someplace random?
No, that's, that, that's what that used to be.
So that is a Williston Fisher's, which made me be.
No, it's, it, that's old, older Maple Tree Place. Not sure quite how far back you have to go to, to have it be three tomatoes, you know, six or seven years, maybe.
Right. So it should be years or whatever. And it's just like, that's like their big, here's my landing page and that's all.
Well, they pulled it, they pulled it off Google Maps. So it's the most recent street view. I think they pulled a lot of their images from Street View actually.
It's so interesting. Again, like I do some of that, sorry, did some of this for work at the health department. And it was never, you never took into account what something looked like, like the proposal is just like some funky PDF.
Looks like it closed in 2014.
They actually like pretty deeply what can't format your application that like.
Architecture, you would like, you know, pay attention to that nuance and detail.
Yeah, you, you want to see a little bit of that architect's side come out in, in the document design for sure. And I also, because you're talking about public communication, if things are, are too basic, people just kind of walk right by them, you know, so.
Well, and you gotta be able to explain what it is that you're looking at and looking for and what people's opinions are. And so.
Yep.
Shayla and Jill and I have spoken quite a bit. And Megan, you've said you wanted to mostly listen, but do you want to weigh in on anything?
No, I was, given that I was unable to do my homework. I was trying to do a little bit of ethnography on your comments and kind of synthesize them a little bit. And one thing I was trying to pay attention to. What, and I'm assuming that Matt and Emily've got this too, is kind of like, what are the questions that we're, that we're coming up with? So I, I can read a, a quick list. I think that you probably already have them, but so I guess this is in response to Matt's request that he be able to bring some questions from us. So we, it sounds like we have questions about the level of subcontracting and the involvement of the principals. He have questions about the outreach plan, especially with underrepresented groups and in the context of COVID. We have questions about, I guess, sort of the balance of their expertise, you know, are they really focused on legal issues or transportation planning, but not as much on architecture and planning as, as we need in our context. So that, that seems like a good thing to attend to. Definitely the Vermont experience piece came through really strongly in all of your comments. Partly around the size of places, but also, you know, I, I totally agree that I think the, having experience, if not Vermont, then something pretty close to it is important because form-based code, as you have all pointed out, is is going to look different. It should look different in Williston, Vermont than it will in Wilson, North Dakota. And, and so, or, you know, somewhere else. You know, one thing that I've, I've really longed for is some way of interpreting, you know, the sort of classic New England farmhouse style into more of our aesthetics and more of our, 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 our local architecture. You know, fewer of the sort of Swedish modern blocky things. And more, you know, farmy, farmhousey style things. So I think that that Vermont experience is really valuable, especially with form-based code, like more so than with other things. And then it sounds like the timeframe is, is definitely a, an issue, given the range that we had of, of different proposals from really quick to really long. You know, I, I missed a couple of the summaries, but it sounds like the sort of 15 month range might be a good middle ground and and yeah. So anyway, I hope that was, if I helped a little bit in kind of summarize. Given that I wasn't able to actually look at the proposals.
Having those questions pegged a little better is really helpful. And just to review the four that we were talking about being in the top four are 15 months, 18 months, 12 months and 16 months. So there's not that much variety in that, in them. We had eliminated the ones that were longest and the shortest. So good. And Kate, haven't heard much from you.
Uh, yeah, no, I've been taking it all night. I'm in pretty much agreement. I think the Vermont aspect is, is a big one, obviously, probably the biggest for me and also the communication and, and outreach, doing that well and getting as much information as we can. So I think those are my two.
Yeah, it sure would be nice to, to pick a style and run with it in the growth center. It's, I, I couldn't really identify what we've got just now. It's a lot of different things. There's a lot of different things going on, none of them, especially New England vernacular.
No, we have a good variety of bank style.
Yeah, yeah, all the different kinds of banks. I mean, you know, Maple Tree Place was supposed to be reflective a little bit of, of something sort of New England-y. But, but there was a lot that got chopped out of it when, when the time came to actually. Build it and, and budget it. And, you know, that's also something I think form-based code ends up being a really strong defense to is, is what they call value engineering. Where, you know, the balconies get shallower or go away, the windows get smaller, the. You know, the, the, the first floor gets shorter instead of being a tall retail capable first floor, it becomes, you know, a 12-foot first floor, things like that. When you have a code that says, no, you, you know, you, you can't do that. That helps a lot, but I, but I really would agree with the statement that we'll do best if we actually come up with. Something, if we have a firm that is capable of coming up with something that starts to create a more unified style that's actually reflective of, of the place. And. Your guess is as good as mine is, I, I think it probably looks like more pitched roofs, more dormers. It probably looks like. More clavbered, integrated into some of the brick and probably not a lot of stucco. And, and then I'd leave it to the architects to really put the dimensional requirements to it that actually make it work.
If I often wonder, do you remember, Matt, when we. When the DRB asked. Asked the planning commission, why we were so obsessed with not allowing flat roofs? And we were like, this is like eight years ago or something like that. And we were like, oh, well, okay, if, if, you know, if. Not allowing flat roofs is causing you a lot of grief, DRB, well, you know, we can, we can, you know, loosen that. And now. I know, I had no idea that that was going to be such a disaster.
Yeah.
Help them out and simplify their work. We had no idea that, that whoever the Finney Crossing people are, I forget.
Snyder and, yeah.
We're gonna go crazy with the flat roof.
Well, it just, it, it lets you put a lot more leasable space inside a lot less building. And. You know, has some other implications for, you know, construction sequencing and stuff like that. And there's also, there's, there's good ways to do. Flat roofs and, and not so good ways to do flat roofs. And we've had our challenges with. You know, I go back to rooftop mechanical, but this time over at Finney, and we had kind of a last minute, Emily's laughing about it now, but it was miserable. Dealing with the Hilton, these, these giant air handling units that are only made bigger by the giant screening that is around them now. Where I think the real intent of Williston's rules was to say, you know, that stuff should be hiding behind a parapet and you shouldn't be seeing it. Or, or the fence around it. And you'll see the same thing at Healthy Living. There's a, there's a big giant thing on the roof at Healthy Living. And, you know, we, we would really like to be able to address that stuff. And. You know, another way to go with that example from eight years ago with the DRB was, we also were saying things like, well. You can have three stories under a pitched roof and that's it. And at one point, the Finney Crossing folks said, well, we'd really like four stories. And have that fourth story look like dormers inside of the pitched roof. And the answer was no, but we'll give you three stories with a flat roof. Well, I, I sort of opened that up to discussion as to which is the better. And more pleasant design to look at at the end of the day. I, I know where I would go. And then again, you've got to get it in front of the architects who can tell you what pitch of roof and how much those dormers need to stick out and how many of them you can have. And still have it all. Sort of work and, and look right and, and, and be the thing that you, that you hoped it would be.
If you're gonna have a roof, maybe Chapin and I will require that you have to have solar panels on the entire thing.
You might do that too. If, if you, if you go by Taft Farm someday now where Williston Coffee Shop is, that's, that's three stories where the third is, is really just a third story, but it looks like. Little dormers with a roof element. And it does soften the impact of those buildings, you know, significantly. So we, we, we've gotten it more right in some places than others.
Okay. And in keeping with our other town plan, there's some interesting things I want to figure out how they fit in, such as. The fact that we want to, from our energy plan, that we want to encourage parking lot canopies and solar, rooftop solar. And so how does that factor in? Before we end, I. Any, any other comments about this topic? I have a question on something else. Okay, we'll leave that there. If people have more thoughts, obviously you can email them in to Matt and Emily. Matt or Emily, could you give us an update about what's happening with construction of the hotel? Down by the post office and what's happening with Friendly's?
Well, Friendly's wasn't mowing their lawn all summer and I sent them a zoning violation. Which I barely had the authority to do and probably would have lost if they'd appealed it, but they did mow the lawn. But I don't know what's happening other than that. We, we've had no inquiries. It is owned by a real estate investment trust that owns all of the. Company-owned Friendly's location, so it's not a franchisee that owns it. Which means that, you know, when I mailed my zoning violation in, it went to Boca Raton. Probably went right to the bottom of, of somebody's inbox. So we've, I've talked a little bit with the town manager about how can we try to exert a little bit of. Pressure on them to keep the property up and keep it secured. But we really, you know, it's, it's not on the market. Nobody's asking about redevelopment potential yet. But you, you know, you saw in one of those proposals, somebody looked at it and said, hey, this, this is like ripe for redevelopment and it's in a super prominent place. And that's absolutely true.
Selfishly, it's a fantastic place for a transit center.
Yeah. Once we get those open-topped buses ordered, we'll be all, we'll be all set to get people back on the bus, right?
I do, I think transit.
The electric one came through Williston the other day, which I was sort of happy to see, one of the electric ones. So that was cool.
It's doing the red line a lot. There's two electric ones and they, they've been putting on six or 700 miles a week, those electric ones.
And Chapin, do they do a day without, before they go in and charge?
Yes, they're just charging at night.
That's cool.
But they can't, they're having trouble making, depending on how much the air conditioning has to run and stuff, they have trouble making a double shift of 18 hours. But no problem making 10 hours, 12 hours.
Okay.
But we're, we're getting data on it and finding out what the problems are.
Well, we'll see how winter goes, right? Cold weather.
Yes, well, and we cheated in order to, in order to have plenty of range, they have a, they have a small amount of heat from their. Heat exchanger, you know, they're. But they also have a small tank of fuel for, for heating. Because the trade-off of that, if you can have it stay on the road for more miles. Because you're spending a little bit of fossil fuel to keep the passengers warm. It actually winds up being a positive trade-off. And in very cold weather, the batteries get less efficient and the heating needs get high with the doors open so much. And so. They only, they don't plan to use those in the shoulder season, but on really cold days, they can turn on a fossil fuel burning heater.
The other thing you asked about was the hotel.
Yeah.
At Blair Park, so. I read the Free Press like everybody else, and that's kind of as much as I know, which is that they've paused construction down there. And that's, that's not great. It'd be a heck of a lot better if, if they were still building. I have not been approached by anybody about changing the plan for that. Building or its use yet. And I. My, my greatest fear is that I'm going to pick up the phone and somebody's going to say, hey, could we, could we make that an apartment building? Because it would be way too dense as an apartment building. Or hey, could we make it senior housing, which is allowed there? And the DRB has some precedent of not treating. Certain types of senior housing as, as generating a residential density, but it's, it's a bit of a. It's a bit of an interpretive stretch to do that in our current bylaw, and it feels like an awful lot of site development, especially if that change were made. Midstream, but I am. I'm just taking a guess. It, it could be that there's just a temporary cash flow issue and, and they're going to be back in business shortly. I have heard. From the developers at Finney Crossing that the Hilton Hotel is doing okay. The, the one that was literally brand new and, and ready for occupancy at the, at the outset of COVID. So they, they had a pause, but they're, they're doing okay now.
That's primarily long-term stay, yes?
Yes, they're like, they're almost like apartments, those rooms, like studios.
And is the Shoebox Hotel by the post office, is that a possibility? If it didn't become a hotel of becoming student housing for Vermont Technical School College?
Could. It, it could. They, they, pre-COVID, were talking to us about wanting some more student housing, probably not as much as they could get. In there. And then, of course, we had all those crazy announcements about the state college system. That really threw a lot of things into question, but our understanding. Prior to everything going sideways was that VTC Williston is, is heavily subscribed in their programs and is, is doing very well. As far as the Vermont State Colleges go and was looking to add. Some more, some more student housing to serve the population there. So, you know, some, something will happen, we'll, we'll deal with it, you know, when it comes. Form-based code could probably honestly help a site like that become more flexible. You know, over the long run, I don't, I don't know if it's going to change fast enough to help them do whatever, whatever it is they feel they have to do. And I think just so much is up in the air as to.
Yeah.
You know, what the world looks like even six months from now.
I, I had noticed too, that when they were talking about closing campuses, Randolph was on the chopping block, but Williston was not.
Yeah.
And so if they were trying to consolidate in Williston, I would thought, thought that they would need some housing. Okay, any other commissioner comments or questions? Any staff comments or questions?
I just wanted to reiterate our, our process here for form-based code. So probably by the end of the day, Friday, we'll be reaching out to. Likely four firms to do some follow-up interviewing. If, if it feels like some of those interviews are one or two questions, I might talk to Taylor and Regina about talking to even, even five. But I don't know how much time they have allocated for it. It's, it's not. We didn't put interviews out as a big part of this process, but more that we reserved the right to call in a few folks for follow-up interviews if we had specific questions. So we don't have like a big, long slate of standard interview questions we're planning on asking. That said, the feedback from tonight has been really, really useful in that regard. And so we will do that. Interview process happens on September 24th, which is before you meet again, assuming you, you don't want to meet again to talk about these proposals, which, you know, again, we're willing to. Support that next week if, if we need to. All I need is. Three days lead time to warn the meeting and I'll do, do whatever works for folks. But I, I felt like we got through a lot tonight. And I got a lot of what I was needing and hoping and expecting here. And if, you know, if, if we end up hiring somebody terrible, you can just blame it on me and say, I'm at, Matt picked wrong. I don't know what he was doing. I don't think that's going to happen. And. I'm, I'm really excited for this project. It's been a thrill to read through these and think about. What we're all going to get to do in the next year and a half, you know, to, to work on this. So. That's all I've got. Chapin, I did update the calendar and work plan just to get some of those things mentioned. It only took you two meetings to tell me to do that.
Administrative details.
When does the capital budget come around? When does annual report come around? That kind of stuff, but we'll keep working on that. And. Obviously, once we get a vendor for form-based code, we'll know a lot more about that. And I would close by saying. We, you know, you've, you've talked a little bit about wanting to hold this forum on growth. I understand the general idea of saying to the community, there is a population of, you know, people and employers and businesses. That are likely to come to Williston over the next long-range period, let's say 30 years. And we want to back out and ask the community some questions about. How it feels about some potential scenarios for how the town would accommodate that. So I would look to have a more pointed conversation, either Chapin just with you or with the group about what you'd like us to design for that. Event and what you'd like to get out of it. You know, it can be as simple as, hey, there's 3,000 more people coming to Williston. Where do you want to put them? And, and we can kind of game that out, but we did some of that with the survey. We could do more of it. If we prepare properly in a more of a live event or. There's a lot of ways it, it could go. And I just want to make sure at the staff level, before I turn folks, at least on this, we get a little more clarity about. What you envision that process to be like and especially. What you want to get out of it and, and what you want to be able to do with what you get out of it. So just let that, let that cook for a little bit. And, and we'll, we'll help you, you get there and then we'll figure out the scheduling.
I think, you know, just kind of a quick reaction to that, Matt. I think I would like there to be a strong educational component. To the forum. I feel like that was really valuable in the survey. And as we all have noted, you know. Unless, unless you pay attention to. I mean, Planner's Corner is great, but it's quite new. And, and even then, you know, probably a lot of people don't read it. So the, the black box of planning. For most people really needs opening up and explaining. And so I think one of the things I want most out of it is, is kind of the educational side. You know, obviously I do want to hear from people. We've had forums before, but I feel like one of the biggest limitations is that people. You know, a lot of, and this is, you know, from all walks of life. In Williston, just have no idea that there's a growth center. Or that, or we, you know, limit growth in the rural areas, or, you know, that, that Finney Crossing was planned, you know. Whatever it was.
20 years ago.
20 years ago. And that, you know, what's coming up now has been in the works for a really long time. And I feel like. If there was more understanding of those things, we would be able to move forward and able to have useful conversations. Rather than always having to revisit these, these same kind of points. And I understand, I'm like, I don't. I don't know anything about the Conservation Commission, right? But, but. But I feel like that would be a really valuable out, outcome of the, the forum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing we've talked about internally, you know, you mentioned a couple of our current outreach efforts like Planner's Corner and, you know, some of the chart stuff that we've sort of dragged out over and over again about, you know, who. Who makes the rules, who enforces the rules, who adopts the rules, that kind of stuff. And I think we just have to keep rolling that out over and over again. One thing we've talked about, and it, and it's similar to what came up in some of the engagement plans for the form-based code consultants, is. The idea of some short videos, you know, talking over PowerPoint generally. More fun than that if we can get the production value there, but saying like, here's three minutes about growth and development and the impact on schools. Here's, you know, two minutes about growth management, or let's take a tour through that land use map and illustrate. Those places by walking around in them. And part of me wants to get. Over the next year, like, you know, a dozen or more of these sort of little videos like that loaded up that people can just go see anytime they want. And that we can keep serving out to people over and over again. So that somebody who wants to can, you know, basically subscribe to our YouTube channel and, you know. Pick away at their, their knowledge gaps. And so the question to this group would be. I don't, I don't mind doing a forum on growth activity before we get all that done, because that's going to be a long-term. I don't I don't mind doing a forum on growth activity before we get all that done because that's going to be a long-term project and we're going to have to fit it in around a bunch of stuff, but. Working with you all to think about like, what is that basic amount of planning, understanding that you want to sort of. Make available to people before you ask them what they think. So that you are continuing to get that, you know, informed conversation. That was a huge component of what we tried to do with the RZD Open Space Survey.
Successfully.
Yeah, literally.
Yeah, in fact, that whole second part of the survey was the forum on growth and I had this thing where people were going to put sticky dots on the map and like, how do I convert that to? Multiple choice questions. For better or for worse.
That was awesome. I think one thing that came up for me in that forum was the transportation thing. The traffic, sorry, the traffic issue and transportation. And that kept coming up and I've now heard. Chapin and Matt say over and over like, oh, so much of our traffic is through traffic. And I don't think people are hearing that. So I think. More about connectivity and roads and traffic and. And density and. What different solutions are to that? And to be fully honest, I don't know that I even really, I know that I don't really understand it fully, but that seemed like an important piece that was. That we should we should have included. But I did think that that a lot of the other pieces were there and are really good. I do think that the difference between. You know, what something looks like versus how dense it is versus. You know, where it is, those are those are things that I think we are going to have to do again and again and again.
Yeah.
Transportation, what we're doing. What the problems are and what the the solutions to those problems are. That that piece is one I think we're going to need.
Yep.
I would love to see that education piece like almost start at the. This is what Williston was and like walk you through like the historical farm to like and how we got here. That goes along the population chart trend that goes along like, you know, these other things that are. Around the Venn diagram of Williston, schools, traffic patterns, economy, it's sort of like touching these pieces that kept flaring up in our conversations with folks, but it. It doesn't get at like what planning has done. And then it's like, to me, what I really, what I really want, so it's like best education, but what I actually want to know from our residents is what do they envision of Williston next? Like, I want to hear from a way more diverse audience in our community about what else do they want to see or what more, because I feel like we often get stuck in this space of like. Complaining about what happened now and like Megan's saying, like, that was twenty years in the works. If you wanted to complain about it, you missed the boat by twenty years, like. I feel like we need to get that up to present day time and then we can say, and what do you really want? Because I think what I love seeing in those surveys was like this beautiful idea of of connective trails that aren't just talking about Williston, they're talking about Shelburne, they're talking about. You know, things that are like a really beautiful idea that if we can, if we can talk more about those things, because we're not just complaining about what already happened. I think there's more ideas, right? Dog parks, connected paths, you know, getting these communities that have their own private paths to connect to the user paths, if that's ultimately what people want, just. I think there's a lot of good ideas out there, but we seem to just get stuck in these spots where as if it's just a, if it could take you from like the farm to now. With some of those key ideas around, you know, the things that we hear from folks, that would just be, I feel like we get to, we get to the point at which now I actually really want to hear what else you have to say, like. Not the points, but but what's, what is it? In addition to what you love about Williston, what would you love more about Williston and be more excited about? If we could build it or create it or envision.
And I think Jill, the key to me there is that. Given these levers, like, given the the tools available to planning. What do you want to see?
Right.
I like, I really like that idea. And I think I remember you saying a while ago, like. You know, could we draw? Some adorable park in between Dick's Sporting Goods and. Best Buy where there's the squirty fountain out of the street and, you know, food trucks all around and whatever, like, could we draw that and say like, look, is this something you're interested in? Like.
You're excited about. And would it then matter that it's a flat roof that you're hanging out in the squirty water park with, right? Like, I think. But we spend often so much time rooted in that, like. You know, what already has already come to pass, it is already in fruition, it already is here. Could we, could we accept? And then also, you know, form-based code will help us improve some of that stuff. And also, what would you love? What would you, what else would you want?
So I'm hearing. Education about the history of how we got to where we are. And I think also education would be good to sort of reply to some of the. Misconceptions. For instance, we are not dumping raw sewage into Lake Champlain. We have a twenty-year sewer plan. We are, we are not suffering overcrowding in the schools and our trend is actually downward despite our growth in population. So we should include, you know, sort of correcting whatever misconceptions came through in the previous survey. But if I could summarize what I'm, the way I would like to see it. Since I've been here long enough, I've seen that the population more than double in Williston and I've seen Taff Corners go from farms to what it is today. And I see the success of the fact that when we finally gave up trying to keep things out of Taff Corners. We were able to then protect the rest of the ag rural zone. And then we have this middle zone of the RZD and I feel as though. If there is development pressure, you don't, you have to look far to. Southern New England. And New York State to see where growth pressure has caused. Things to get more infill and more this and that. And sometimes more sprawl, because you then wind up with a lot of concentrated people living in a new development that's not near services they can walk to. And so I would like to see. A hypothetical, if Williston's population doubles again in the next twenty-five to thirty years. What is the ag rural zone going to look like? I'm thinking people will say they want it to look about the same. What's the residential zone going to look like? And what's the growth center going to look like? And. One of the premises, of course, is that if we're not allowing building at all, then it's almost impossible to get affordable housing, which is one of the values that was expressed in the survey. So I would love to see examples, and it could be from Southern New England, of towns that were at a population of nine or ten thousand. Twenty years ago and now we're at twenty, thirty thousand. And sort of different ways that they absorb that kind of growth without losing the qualities, what a lot of people refer to as the quality of life. Of living in Williston, which included paths, but not so much views. I was interested, there was not as much strength on views as there were on paths and interconnectedness.
Yeah, I think I think we can pull some of those examples. There's some places in Southern New Hampshire that come to mind. That have had, you know, really intense growth pressure as it's gotten more expensive to live near Boston. And I think I think you'll probably find. Both good and poor examples of of dealing with that. I know Bedford, New Hampshire outside of Manchester has gone through a pretty big growth spurt in the last twenty years and. I'd reserve judgment on whether they did it right or not. I can't remember which. But, you know, they've got a highway exit, they've got a Walmart, they've got a sort of a beloved village center. It would be interesting to look for some places like that and 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 talk about that a little bit. I I do think that helping people. Helping people accept the reality of the balance between property rights and growth pressure that we exist in. And that. You know, when I. When I worked in Missoula, we were looking at the urban fringe development area and talking about. We're going to have fifteen thousand more people in this city, in this in this metro area by, I think it was by twenty twenty-five or something. It was, it was relatively rapid timeline. Where do you want to put them? And so in that case, the conversation was actually begun. With the amount of growth sort of as a given and then. There were three scenario patterns, you know, there was put it, put it all in the city, put it all in the suburbs or do something in between and then try to get people's takes on those. So. If we could pull some New England examples that have done it one way or the other. And said, well, here's some places, you know, where we could, you know, plot out the population increase and then plot out or map out the growth. You know, this, this could get pretty time-consuming pretty quickly, but we, I I do think it's worth kind of trying to, whatever it takes to get people. Connected to what's going on in the town. I think it's going to help a lot. I also want to make sure that we're not. Raising an issue where the answer becomes, well, I just don't want anything new. I don't want anything more. And now I'm going to come to every one of your form-based code sessions for the growth center. And just yell and scream that, no, 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 no. Because it won't be productive and it's not based in reality and we need to deal with the reality that more stuff is going to get built in the growth center. We have a, we have a pre-application for a new building in the growth center on our desks. Right now, even in these times, and it's not a super big building. But we have other ones coming and we have a new street we're going to try to build. You know, a new grid street and the development that that will. Likely catalyze. Those are. Those are realities that, you know, you need to be able to say to people, look, the the building's coming. Where do you want it on the site? What do you want it to look like? You know, so. So I'm a little bit sensitive to. Making sure that we play the forum on growth carefully. And make sure that people come away with a very realistic view of, you know, that some new. Growth is probably inevitable in a place like Williston. You know. Much of, much of what was built in Williston in the nineteen nineties was was litigated. All the way out to the bitter end, sometimes in front of the Vermont Supreme Court. And yet some things were were constructed. That's, that's the reality of the. The world we live in. So it's far better to get out of ahead of that and and say what you want than it is to just say, I don't want anything, even if that's what you really want.
And and Matt, I think that there's some. Humane ways to to present that. And I actually think the school one is a school example is a really good one. You know, if you, if you want to have schools in your town. The the birth rate's dropping like a stone. You gotta have new people coming in. Or you're not going to school. I mean, that's what's happening in other towns and we are lucky. And and so like, there is, there are these pieces that I think are. That, you know, if you're thinking about thirty years ago and schools, I mean, even. You know, fifteen years ago with schools in Vermont, they were all growing. And they're not anymore. And and so like, there are other demographic changes that I think. Not all of us have caught up on that are important in terms of the town, what the town looks like, what the town feels like and.
Yes.
Who's here. That that require more people coming.
Yep. So we did hear clearly from the survey that we just did that people who responded, the two hundred and some, most of them wanted less development. When they were asked, you know, where do you put a hundred houses? That most of them went in the, in the area of not to be built. So if they did that exercise again, where you have to put them somewhere, because we don't know whether they're going to come. In the next ten years or in the next fifty years, but think as long-term as you have to. There probably will be development pressure and so let's be ready for it. Let's build it into our planning so that it's not as disruptive as it otherwise would be. By the same token, I think there's a really good point here, which is we don't want to encourage development because our people don't want more development in general. It's like, if we, if you build a highway or you build a sewer, that is encouraging development. Interestingly. Indirectly, but that's what, that's what leads to more development. And so. I think we can differentiate that we're without encouraging development, we're going to say some development's going to happen. How should it happen? What should it look like? So for me, visualizing, it could look like this, could look like that is important. And you can just walk through Finney Crossing and get that people and respond very positively to the row houses, the. Those. What's the word for them? The houses that are three aside, two and a half stories high.
Yep.
People like those. And where, and they respond very negatively to the latest apartment buildings. And so. To me, if you just see a picture or walk by something and. There is a reaction to it. And we can somehow codify that. And if there's going to be more houses, they're going to be of this form. I realize it's nine oh six. Megan, did you want to say something or did you want to adjourn?
Well, I I will adjourn and I will suggest adjourning in just one second, but. I I would really love for this forum to also see what we can do to incorporate more folks from who live in Finney Crossing. And I, like, over the summer, I was. I volunteered to deliver school meals to families who couldn't make it to the school to pick up free food for kids. And I, so a couple of the places I delivered three times a week. To were in those apartment buildings and. I I think there is a lack of understanding of who, what, who are the people who live there? And I I think they don't, I think people don't realize that they are desperately needed apartments and. That families live there and families of various economic standing. And so. I feel like we should. In some, you know, in some way, reach out to those residents and and make sure that those voices are heard. In in our forum. Even if people are renting short-term, you know, they're currently Williston residents and they might like to stay here. They might be trying to buy something. We see in Front porch forum every day, people like, I'm trying to buy a house. Is anybody going to sell their house? Right? So anyway, so I, that also kind of goes back to Shaila's comment about. You know, reaching out to underrepresented groups. Well, in a lot of ways, our underrepresented groups are the people who are living in Finney Crossing right now. Because they're, you know, except for Ron, who's like, he's in Hamlet, but, you know. So anyway. That was my comment and I'm happy to suggest we adjourn.
Okay, any parting shots?
I just had one thing. I had emailed you about, did we ask for people's? Addresses in that initial one, because I was curious, like, if we, if we knew where people were, like, we had two hundred and twenty people, but where were they? Were they consolidated in any one area? Was the village, had you represented? Was it the people up on Yance Hill? Like, you know, I was curious where the the sample was being taken from, because I think to Megan's point, we do really need to get folks who are the people who are. The wealthy people who don't work in Williston and who want to keep it exactly the same as they don't want it to build. And then the people who need housing and ideally places they could walk to and acres they could send their kids to that are all pretty easily accessible. And I.
So we.
To like not identify people as who they are and where they live, but like, just to kind of get a snapshot of where we're, where we're getting input from.
We didn't ask that question and I'm glad you brought that up because we have a survey thing for the official map for base code. I remember it was like, there's some question that we didn't ask that we should ask when we do this other survey. We'll put that in there.
Yeah, and I will say for the survey that that we presented in August, we did target the solicitation at the residential zoning district and particularly, you know, we mailed it to. Owners of those potentially affected large parcels and people who abutted those potentially affected large parcels. So when you look at that map, not only does it target the RZD. It targets the part of the RZD that generally has the more expensive houses in it, because you don't have as many of those big parcels over on the other side of two A. You know, in some of the older neighborhoods like Lamp Light Acres and. I don't even know, some of them don't even have names anymore because they're they're neighborhoods now. They're not developments like they were in nineteen seventy-nine when they were built. But so the focus was heavily on the part of the RZD that was near the big open space in terms of who got a letter, who got asked to fill out the survey.
I think that's really, really important to make sure we carry forward that information. Because it's very easy. Because it's very easy, as you know, there's turnover and boards and so forth, for the survey to be you know, known and and the the insights from it to be propagated without recognizing the limitations of the data collection. So I I had known that at the beginning, but I had forgotten it. So we need to all remind ourselves and everyone else who, every time we look at anything from that survey, that that was targeted and limited and that it's going to produce certain kinds of, you know, biases. It's just a natural part of the data collection.
Yeah, you know, I I heard a real diversity of opinions, both in the survey responses and in that meeting. But I got a follow up email from a participant the next morning who said, well, clearly the people of Williston have spoken. And then, and then listed a number of things that the person was absolutely sure everybody agreed on in the survey and in in the meeting. And I thought, oh, I didn't quite see it. You know, I, it's not that I didn't see themes. I certainly saw some emerging themes, but but I didn't see nearly the the unified voice that this person came away just feeling like everything they thought about Williston had been, you know, totally validated. And I think you're right, Megan, we should, we should have a, we should always have documentation of our process that goes along with any of that stuff when we're archiving it.
Yeah, I think maybe what I'll do is I'll clean up that whole thing and do a cover memo for it, like, this was why we did this survey. This is the outcome of the Planning Commission's decision. We posted to Front Porch Forum a couple of times and handed on a silver platter to 230 people that live in
Yeah.
big houses.
And it was advertised, it was advertised multiple times. Some of the Sustainable Williston people advertised the need to fill it out. The CRG people did on Front Porch Forum. Several people who answered it said, I'm not in that zone, but blah, 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 blah. And so I think we can assume that the majority were in the zone because that's the most important to them because it affected their quality of life more than other people. But I think that's a really good comment. And thank you. Okay, it's 9:13 and we're adjourned.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
See you next time. Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, bye.
Thank you, guys. Good night.